Good evening. Welcome to the Montegalia County Commission Candidate Forum. I'm Barb Howe. I'm the moderator for tonight on behalf of the Community Coalition for Social Justice. Our other cosponsor is the Morgantown-Kingwood branch of the NAACP. So we will have our two candidates for county commission, Sean Sikora, the Republican, and Bob Beach, the Democrat. But first know that the deadline has passed to register to vote. Election Day is November 8, 2022. Early voting starts next Wednesday, October 26, and runs through November 5 every day from 9 to 5, except for Sunday. There will be early voting at Mason-Dixon Park, 79 Buckeye Road Core, Mountaineer Mall, 5,000 Green Bay Road. It'll be in Election Central. There's a great big sign out there. You'll find it easily. And at the former Earth Dodge dealership at Mid-Atlantic Drive Pier Pond Center in Morgantown. Please note that there is no early voting or voting at all at the Westover VFW as there has been in the past. If you were registered to vote at the Westover VFW, you will, I think it's Skyview Elementary School that they've moved it to, but please go to GoVoteWV and find out exactly where you're going to be voting. Absentee ballots are still available. You can apply at GoVoteWV.com and request them until November 2. You can return your ballot postmarked by November 8 election day, or you can hand-deliver it to the county clerk no later than November 7 on Monday. So some contact information for the county clerk. The phone number is (304) 291-7230. And the office, of course, is at the courthouse, 243 High Street. And the website, montegaliacountyclerk.com. If you have other questions for the Secretary of State, who's in charge of the elections for the state, the website is apps.sos.wv.gov. And the phone number is (304) 558-6000. Our format tonight is that each candidate will be given two minutes for an introduction. Then there will be questions. Each will have two minutes to answer the question. And there will be closing statements at 1.5 minutes. I want to remind everyone that this is a forum. We're here to listen to their positions. It is not a debate. They may or may not agree on things, but it is just simply to hear them state their positions on the questions that we'll be asking. So with that, we will get started. If you have questions, if you're in the audience, you can put them in the comment part of the Facebook Live page as you're watching on Facebook. Or if you're here at the Mon County Center, there are cards available. You can write them down and pass them to the end of the aisle. All right. Let's begin then with introductions. Bob, if you will introduce yourself.
There you go. My apologies. Again, Monta Beach, member of the West Virginia State Senate. I've been in public service for 22 years, 12 years being in the West Virginia State Senate, and 10 years prior to that in the West Virginia House of Delegates. I also served here locally on the Montegalia County Planning Commission and on the Senior Mons Board, where I also chaired the committee. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here tonight because folks have reached out to me here in Montegalia County because they have issues with our current county commission. A lot of that has to do with communications. And my question to myself is not whether I could do the job, but do I have something extra to bring to the job? And certainly I do. My experience here in the state of West Virginia and state government for all these years, the contacts and the resources I have across the state will benefit Montegalia County greatly, as it already has with numerous projects that have created jobs and saved jobs as well. So yes, I would enjoy being your next county commissioner. I've enjoyed public service for the past 22 years, working for you in Charleston and Marion County as well, because the 13th district does make up Mon and Marion County. But I think it's an opportunity for Montegalia County to take advantage of some of the resources we have across the state that aren't getting back here that should be. And again, I look forward to your questions. And the viewers at home, I hope that you send in your questions, and we'll take a few of those as well this evening. Thank you.
And Sean Sikora, please.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I want to thank the legal women voters for having this forum. This is vital that the citizens be able to see both candidates for a position and be able to see them side by side and be able to discern differences in policy. So thank you very much. I've lived in Mon County for 40 years now. I'm 56, so I've lived here, well, I've lived here 38 years, so about 40 years. And I've been here longer than I've been anywhere else. I came to Mon County in 85 and fell in love with the area as I started school. I've put myself through school, working full-time. And then I started my career after I received my undergrad. I started my career at the Department of Energy as a contractor. And there I've worked 28 years. While working there full-time, I managed to get my MBA. In my position at the Department of Energy, as a site support contractor, I've done every position at NETL, from working in the warehouse where I started, to business manager, project manager, and contracts manager. So I've had a wide variance of experience with a lot of financial importance. My biggest contract at NETL was over $350 million, so about 10 times the size of Montegalia County's budget. And we managed that to about four different levels of WBS. So it's very, very technical. And I thought in 2016 that my experience could be utilized here in Mon County. And I believe over the six years, I have done what I said I was going to do, and I'm here asking for your vote for reelection.
All right. Thank you both. We will now start with the questions. And the first question is, what do you consider the most significant challenges for Montegalia County over the next four years? And a related question, how does that change if Amendment 2 is adopted? And we will start with, let's see, who goes first on this question? It doesn't matter. Okay. Can you tell I haven't done this before? Okay. We will start with Mr. Sikora on this one, and we will alternate back and forth.
Well, thank you for your question. And as I understand the question, the most significant challenge over the next four years, well, in Montegalia County, we have good problems. And one of those problems is managing growth and doing it in a responsive and comprehensive manner. So that is the way I've looked at things over the past six years. We have a lot going on that's good here. We need to continue that. We need to continue our broadband expansion. Over the past two years, we developed a plan, and now we're executing that plan. So we found over COVID how important broadband was. Started working on that project about four years ago, but it wasn't anything that anybody really had a lot of appetite to bite off because it's such a huge undertaking. But COVID really pointed out that we really need to follow through, and we need to come up with a comprehensive plan for our overall community, which is what we've done, and now we're executing that. So we have to manage our growth, though, in a comprehensive way and look at all factors. We've had problems over the years where we've grown too quickly, and we didn't look at things like how that affects the school system. And when I came into office, I wanted the commission to work more collaboratively with all the municipalities and all the entities, like the Board of Education. I was actually asked to run by someone in the Board of Education because they wanted us to work together. So we need to consider all factors and work together with all entities. There's been a lot of talk lately about the Morgantown Utility Board. And just yesterday's paper, we announced that we had a major agreement with them to move forward for major water and sewer infrastructure. So again, I didn't get to the point as how Amendment 2 would affect that, but I'm certainly here at the table. I had a long discussion with Amy Summers the other day, the Majority Leader of the Senate, and she wanted to know my opinion for Amendment 2 moving forward. So I'm ready to be here to move Montegalia County forward.
All right. Thank you. And now Senator Beach, what do you consider the most significant challenges for Mon County over the next four years? How does that change if Amendment 2 is adopted?
Well, Amendment 2 is where I'm going to start because that will be an issue that will haunt us for the future if that is taken up and adopted. I'm optimistic that it will not be. I think the governor's doing a very good job of trying to work in each county to share his position on this, and he does not want this to pass. He's also shared with the communities also that he has a plan to get rid of the personal property tax in regards to your car, your auto taxes. So I think the governor's doing a very good job out there, but we always have to have that big "but" there in the room, so to speak. And we have to take into consideration what happens if it does pass. And that's where, you know, a unified look, sitting down with the counties, the municipalities, and seeing what we can do. Because it's going to impact not just Montegalia County, but all the counties around us, big, small, whatever it may be. And if you're taking a holistic approach, this bill should not, this amendment should not pass. But if it does, you may have to at some point reach out to other counties and work together in cost-saving measures that would benefit everyone. But it's an issue we just can't ignore. It's something that's on the horizon that sadly I don't want to have to deal with because I'm happy with what we have going on here in Montegalia County already. But as far as issues here in the county, it goes back to another reason why I'm here is communication. And many folks across this county believe that there's not effective communication between our residents and the county commission office, and I definitely want to change that. I have an open-door policy in Charleston, and I intend to carry that through here to county commission as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Senator Beach, we'll let you start first with the second question. How can the county commission improve services for people living outside the county's major metropolitan centers? And there are a long list of examples as possibilities. Please address lack of grocery stores, safe and affordable housing, ease of access to recreational opportunities, public transit, et cetera.
It's a very good question, and that's a big issue to tackle here in Montegalia County. Communication, again, I can't emphasize that enough, sitting down. I've recently joined a group that we're working on the homeless situation. Just trying, right now, we're in a fact-finding state, just trying to get data from WVU. We know that's out there. Because they do a type of audit where they go out in the community at night and just visit with these homeless folks, determine where they're from and what their needs are. So that's the first step, bringing that in. And I don't think it's necessary to reinvent the wheel. There's opportunities for us to reach out to Marion County, who has a very good plan in place for homeless folks and how they're addressing that there. Food deserts is obviously one that much of the state has to look at. Montegalia County, not so much, but the western end, to a degree, yes. You have just one grocery store in the hallway into the county. And the next spot would be Waynesburg or down to Fairmont or all the way over 100. I don't believe 100 has a spot. But back in the Oregon towns, the other place. But transportation's an issue. We have a very good mountain line system here in the state of, in Montegalia County, but it's not in the hours that folks are needing that, that transportation in town. And they rely on their neighbors, which Montegalia County probably does it better than anywhere, neighbors helping neighbors, and I'm very proud of that fact. But that's one of the issues that we have to address. And again, it comes down to affordable housing. I think everyone's looking for an answer to that. Obviously, the Hope Shelter here in town takes care of some of our homeless, but that doesn't address affordable housing. Rents have just gone through the roof. Purchasing a home is just sky-high, and most people can't afford that level. So maybe we need to address the rental problem. And maybe there needs to be some adaption to some of our homes and allowing for the smaller homes, the small footprint homes of 1,000 square feet, 800 square feet, 400 square feet. Maybe those need to be made available to families across Montegalia County, particularly our veterans. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Sikora, how can the county commission improve services for people living outside the county's major population centers? Please address the lack of grocery stores, safe and affordable housing, ease of access to recreational opportunities, public transit, et cetera.
Well, I'll probably start with transit first. The county commission has been very, very active in working with mountain line transit to whenever the, as the population centers change, or as there are centers that change across the county, working with them to change their routes. We did that with Hazel's House of Hope. We worked with them to make sure that we can get people to and from that facility. It does no good to build a facility and not be able to get people there. So we've done that all the way out throughout the county, and we have a very good working relationship with mountain line transit. We did it for here for Myland Park, for people to get to our Aquatic and Track Center, for people to get here to Myland Park, for all the facilities that are in this park. So we've worked, we've done a lot of work towards that regard. When you're talking about stores and grocery stores, obviously, the county is a major partner in the University Town Center and the Westridge Development. We work closely with our developer to provide those opportunities. And the county is the bondholders for those whole developments. So we're very attuned to, I mean, that's pretty much what we do, is work with the areas outside, and we work with areas inside. We're very good partners with Granville as far as the University Town Center. We work with all the entities. We're currently working with Westover to have, to work on Hall and Avenue project so they can finally have a better entrance to their city and more accessible through bike traffic. We work on the MMPO where we also, every project we look at, we look at pedestrian and bicycle access to those particular areas. So that's something that we're constantly doing.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Sikora, you can start on the next question first. Please identify three initiatives that you believe would help make Montegalia County a better place to live.
Well, the first one I mentioned already is our broadband project. Again, we've made sure, or we noticed through COVID how important that project is, and that's really given, you know, there's always something good comes out of everything. And with COVID, there's a realization that we need to be better connected. We need to have better opportunities for people to work from home. You know, COVID has changed the workplace environment. Right now, you know, it's changed the way we look at development because we're not building, we're not looking to build office space as much because there isn't a demand for that. There's demand for people to be able to work from home and be able to conduct commerce from home. So big initiative is our broadband project. Another big initiative, I'd say, was continuing the transparency project that we started a couple of years ago, where we are the first ones in the state to actually bring all of our finances online, so anybody in the county can see where we're at at any time. And we were the leaders in starting that. We're now at the point where we have almost 40 counties that have signed up for it. And we almost, we're almost at 100 as far as municipalities that have signed up for that because we led the way in showing how easy it is. We still have a lot of sub-initiatives I'd like to do with that project, like getting everybody in the state on the same enterprise research planning software, so that we're all working from the same chart of accounts. We're all working from the same system, and we're all be able to provide information across the state at the same uniform way. So that's a big project that I'm working on with the auditor's office. Third initiative, I'd like to continue our recreational opportunities that we're providing in the area. We have the Aquatic and Track Center, where we just announced where we're going to have the Olympic diving trials. We're like one of five finalists to have the Olympic diving trials here. That was China. Having that moniker for Mon County is a distinction that's going to drive, it's going to drive people to our county, it's going to drive economic development.
All right. Thank you. Senator Beach, the same question. Please identify three initiatives that you believe would help make Montegalia County a better place to live.
I'll give you four. And number one is to create an all-inclusive strategic plan. And number four tied into that is a listening session in different parts of the county, whether it be at the western end of the county for input, eastern county for input, southern end of the county, whatever it may be. But to have a strategic plan that includes every portion of this county, so that as growth occurs, everyone feels that they're being treated fairly. The other one is job development. I want to continue as the ambassador for Montegalia County. We are, we are the flagship county for the state of West Virginia, plain and simple. And we have opportunities that should come to this community within the next, well, we do know that Mbio is coming here, and they're developing the insulin program. And I attended the research groundbreaking in Bethesda, and then the manufacturing will be here. Groundbreaking is supposed to be in February at this point. But then we have other ones who want to come in here and explore other types of sciences, if you want to call it that, but those announcements will be made later. And those two are, between the two of those, we're talking about 2,000 jobs. And we're trying to replace those jobs that we lost at Myland. That was a business decision. Neither the county commission or the governor had a chance to really have any impact on that, and I don't think there was many folks who thought we could. But we do have an opportunity to find someone to replace it, and that example is right here. I was part of those talks to begin with. That is, again, I will emphasize that I don't take credit for anyone else's ideas. This was a friend of mine, a colleague of mine, not a colleague, but an associate of mine, that brought this to me and said, hey, you want to participate and just be Bob Beach, the state senator, and make these folks feel welcome? So I've been part of those conversations since day one, and I will continue as we move forward in other avenues. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Senator Beach, you can go first on question four. What more can the county do to help solve the opioid crisis?
Well, that's part of the conversation that we're having, that we've kind of blended with the homeless situation because we believe that's a big part of it, and we would like to get some additional information there. And again, I think we reach out to other communities who are doing well. Huntington is a good example of, they've reduced their numbers, nowhere near where they want to be, but we can probably, you know, find some things there that they're working with and implement those here in Montegalia County, whatever it may be. But yeah, it's one of those things that I believe is driving a lot of the homeless problem, and it probably needs to be addressed first rather than last, and then at the same time, we can address the homeless situation.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Sikora, the same question. What more can the county do to help solve the opioid crisis?
I think we can continue to do a lot of things we've already been doing. I mentioned earlier the Hazel's House of Hope. We provide a wraparound service. We're working closely with the developers and those project managers to provide wraparound services to individuals that need that support. The Myland Park Health Right, we provided, just this past year, we provided funding for them to help expand their facility and actually move their facility up so it's closer to Hazel's House of Hope so that they can also have access to that facility. What I've done over the past six years is, as I came on commission, I became the champion of the health department. When I was on commission, when it was budget time, the health department stood in line with all the nonprofits and everybody else fighting for grant dollars. I moved them to a line item status and took them from their original budget of about $250,000 a year to now they're at $1.5 million a year. So in doing so, we prepared them for the whole COVID crisis. And now they, and we're not through that yet, but we've also, with our QRT teams that they've developed and leading the state in that capability, we've given them the tools to help modernize and be able to be there to fight these things and to continue this fight, this opioid crisis. COVID kind of masked a lot of things, and we kept our eye on the ball and said, this hasn't gone away. We really need to keep focusing on that. So during that time, they did a lot to expand the QRT teams. And again, like I said, we need to continue what we've been doing. In the past, just in the past year, we increased our funding to those social agencies 22%. And then the year before, we increased it 7%. So we've been focusing on those issues.
All right. Thank you. And again, if any of you in Facebook Live land have questions, please put them in the comment there, in the audience here, write them on cards, and send them to the end of the aisle. Question five, this will go to Mr. Sikora first. The city of Morgantown and MUB are disagreeing over MUB board representation and governance, yet MUB service is more concentrated in the county than the city. What is your preferred solution to MUB governance?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, looking at today's paper, as I mentioned earlier, you look at today's paper, there's an article about how the county is working with MUB along with the developer. We have a very good relationship with the Morgantown Utility Board, and I'd hate to see that relationship sour. I have a very good relationship with the city, but I've always been in a position of staying in my lane. But MUB's an interesting animal because, you're right, they do service more of outside the city than they do in. So I would like to make sure that the county somehow has a seat at the table going forward to work with MUB. I'd hate to see every project that MUB wants to do have to go through city council for approval because some things just demand a lot quicker speed. Economic development, we need, we meet constantly. We're, it's changing ever constantly, and we need to work a lot quicker. And adding another, add another level of approval to economic development in Mon County, I think would have a chilling effect on development. So we've come so far, and Mike McNulty's done a great job in taking the organization and trying to move it along, and with more of an eye on economic development. And I would hate to see any of those gains that we've had in the past couple of years revert or go backwards. So I continue to be an advocate for MUB and for cooperation with the city, and I'm ready to be a commissioner who's going to work for a solution that everybody can be happy with.
All right. Thank you. Senator Beach, the city of Morgantown and MUB are disagreeing over MUB board representation and governance, yet MUB service is more concentrated in the county than the city. What is your preferred solution to MUB governance?
Well, we're meeting with different governing bodies around the state, and the one thing we always tell, and we tell ourselves this all the time as a legislative body, never give up your power, whether it be city council, county commission, legislature, whatever it may be, never give up your power. But that being said, there needs to be cooperation between the two entities, both the city and the county. Sean's exactly right. There should always be a seat at the table for the county commission or representative of the county commission to sit on this. But yeah, this is something that, quite honestly, it's not rocket science. Just come together, sit down over a cup of coffee, and see how you can work this out. But the city, it is the Morgantown Utility Board, and I think that's the way they look at it, although we do know that the bulk of it's outside the city limits. So it just needs to be an open dialogue here. Again, communications, everything. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Question six will go to Senator Beach first. Governor Justice recently announced that 21 counties in West Virginia would be receiving funding for removal of dilapidated abandoned structures. If Montegalia County is a recipient, how should that program be structured and administered?
Wow. That's a very good question, and I think we're going to rustle around with this for a while to determine how this is going to be implemented, but it has to go through the county commission. We do know the city has issues, but driving around the county just here in the last few weeks, there's some properties there that have been abandoned, and we need to basically just create a list and a priority list here in the state of West Virginia. Some of these properties, obviously, a lot of these properties are absentee owners, and we have to address it that way. We obviously have to follow state code and what we're allowed. Wheeling has a wonderful program for dilapidated housing, and they're doing wonderful things downtown and getting ready, some of those things. But again, communications, everything. And if we're not sitting down to discuss this issue and mapping it out together, then we're just going to come to a grinding halt.
All right. Thank you. Same question. Mr. Sikora, Governor Justice recently announced that 21 counties in West Virginia would be receiving funding for removal of dilapidated abandoned structures. If Montegalia County is a recipient, how should that program be structured and administered?
Well, I think the county commission should take a lead in bringing all the municipalities together to deal with entities, to deal with the structures, depending on where they exist. I do think it's a problem in our county. We recently hired a, our previous dilapidated building person retired, and we hired a new person who actually has a lot of code enforcement experience. And we're looking to, one of the first things I tasked her with is looking at our local ordinance and seeing how it jives with state code, whether we have any teeth to strengthen that ordinance, and whether, or whether we need to actually go to the legislature to strengthen the ordinance. So we've been looking at that, but I do think the commission needs to take the leading role in determining how we're going to deal with this funding and how we're going to apply it to these dilapidated buildings. But we're certainly excited about doing that.
All right. Thank you. And question seven will go to you first, Mr. Sikora. Other than broadband, what are your top priorities for county infrastructure development using funds recently enacted by Congress?
I'm not sure if what funds I'm not sure if what funds recently enacted by Congress would be coming directly to the commission. I think most of those funds go directly to the state and would be available from different grants. So I'd have to understand what grants we're actually talking about. But we've been accessing a lot of those different grant opportunities. We have a mega grant that we just announced a couple of months ago that's still in play, an info mega grant for the whole gateway from 79 up to Chaplain Hill. So that is accessing some of those dollars that have been made available. Currently, we're working with the Water Development Authority. We, there are IJDC grants, but once they're approved, they go to the Water Development Authority. And we're currently getting ready to revise our package, when I say we, the county, MUB, and the developer, to see if we can access those grants. So I think those are some of the dollars that have floated down through the federal government to the state. But most of those things go to the state and then, but we're constantly looking at those opportunities to access those dollars here from Mon County. And we have a very robust grant process in partnership with our developers, in partnership with MUB, in partnership with the Morgantown Area Partnership, and our Development Authority. In the past year or so, we've run over $32 million through our Development Authority, directly accessing these grants to help small businesses and help these businesses that are locating and working in Montague County. And we want to continue doing that when there's a bigger pot available.
All right. Thank you. And the same question. Senator Beach, other than broadband, what are your top priorities for county infrastructure development using funds recently enacted by Congress?
Well, again, like Shaun, I'm not exactly sure which funds they're referencing, but we do have highway dollars coming to us here in the near future. But Shaun is correct. All those dollars go to the state first, federal dollars go to the state first, and then they're doled out appropriately. But I'm always focused on highway transportation and how we can approve it. And right now, it's just a very collective way of tackling our road problems. And each county, well, not each county, I should say, our county has a service fee for roads, and they do a pretty good job of getting our streets taken care of here in city limits. But across the county, there are some issues. So working with the Department of Highways, it would be nice to have some serious input, again, sit down with folks and talk to them, serious input as to what roads are a priority. I think any of us driving around the county could tell you which roads should be a priority. And here of late, we have seen some nice road projects, particularly Sabreton Route 7 in different areas across the county. But that doesn't go far enough. And we had the Roads to Prosperity Program that did launch some money, and we had some more federal dollars that helped push that program a little further. But the new dollars coming in, I think that could push us over the threshold because our highway system is basically a red carpet for economic development here in the state of West Virginia. You're coming into the city, and you're driving in here, and you're coming across some of our roads or our county, and it's a problem. Well, that's the impression they're leaving with, that's the impression they're receiving right off the bat. So roads should be a focus for all this because that's, quite honestly, as a state senator, that's the phone calls I get is for roads to be repaired.
All right. Thank you. And Senator Beach, you'll be first on question eight. What can the county commission do to mitigate the impacts of climate change and spur the transition to renewable energy?
I like this question because I think there's an opportunity on the horizon for us as far as hydrogen goes. And I hinted at it earlier when I said science. There's a facility exploring a hydrogen plant here in north central West Virginia. They're doing their due diligence, they're visiting other cities. But I met with the group, they're a Korean company as well, met with them earlier this month, and one of the gentlemen before leaving said, I want to be here. South Koreans like to be with their own culture. And if we're having Ombayo, which is another South Korean company, come here, they would like to be here for that reason. We have what they need as far as what that facility needs. Now, where I'm going with as far as your environmental and climate change, I would love to see them establish, let's just use the industrial park, if that's where they set up shop, for them to set up a pump right there that our bus garage could maybe bring in two or three buses that were operated by hydrogen and have that the filling station. And just see what that does for us for two or three years. I believe we could get grant dollars to purchase those buses because there's, you know, climate change is on everyone's mind in DC right now, and I think people would welcome an opportunity to work with us in regards to hydrogen.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Sikora, the same question. What can the county commission do to mitigate the impacts of climate change and spur the transition to renewable energy?
As a whole, the Montague County Commission isn't responsible for developing energy policy, but we can be good stewards and look at how we go about development. Take, for instance, you know, we're bringing good green manufacturing jobs to Montague County. Take the Mountain Top Beverage Facility, for instance. That facility is green manufacturing. It's going to provide 300, 400 jobs at the start, and as it expands, it's going to provide a lot more jobs. But it's also doing, bringing good clean jobs to Montague County. So we can do that as we look across, as we look across the economic development horizon. But as a whole, we don't define policy. We don't dictate how this happens. So we just, as we look for these different grant opportunities, there's a lot of money that's put into, as like our MMPO, there's a lot of money that's grants that are into, like providing charging stations. And we've been doing that for a couple of years, looking at these opportunities to provide charging stations at different areas so that people move from more gas-powered vehicles. But it's, I'm just one of those people that doesn't think that it's, you know, you can't just flip a switch overnight. We have to protect our citizens. We don't want to be like Texas that they change overnight and, you know, we have a cold snap or, and, you know, we put our citizens at risk. So anything we do, I want to do it in a very methodical, measured approach and not just try to change overnight.
All right. Thank you. Question nine to you, Mr. Sikora first. What can be done to curtail flooding that occurs out in the county?
Well, I've never been accused of being a weatherman or anybody that can affect the weather. We have done some things. One of the things that has made a lot of noise in the paper was our coming together with the city of Morgantown and MUB to do the Pocono Run Project, which is going to curtail a lot of flooding that has been going on for years. That flooding was highlighted a couple of years ago by a couple back-to-back storms that, you know, had cars floating down Patterson Avenue. I don't think anybody ever thought they would see that. But it's real, and it happened, it happened, you know, twice in a month's time. So we need to, we need to look into the effects of that. We also look at a lot of areas where you're taking area that is undeveloped and you're building there, you have to look into the water mitigation and make sure water runoff is an important thing for us at the commission. That's why the whole, that's the whole reason why we feel like we need subdivision regulations is because some of the areas where you build these developments and they're not planned properly, and you put 30 or 40 houses in a development, and the water runoff from the streets, from the rooftops, it all has to go somewhere. And the afterthought is, wow, it's causing flooding. That's a lot of problems we've had in the Suncrest area. So we need to, I think subdivision regulations would help with a lot of that, to really do planning and do it upfront so that we do this in a responsible way and make sure that water runoff and those type of things are addressed upfront in the planning process, not when we have flooding.
Thank you. Senator Beach, same question. What can be done to curtail flooding that occurs out in the county?
I too believe that a strategic plan with our county in regards to those homes that are being built in floodplains. We have a floodplains map obviously on file that went into play back when I was on the planning commission, and it was extensive in what it provided everyone. But the subdivision regulations, we do have to be careful. The water regulations and how we handle water runoff should be addressed. That should be primary. But we have to be careful that we're not putting an undue burden on folks who just want to build two or three homes for family members. And that we begin by looking at water quality and water runoff, but also the safety management as far as the width of the roads to that little subdivision of three houses, if that's the case. But even on a bigger platform, if there's 40 or 80 homes being built, that we have all the safety features in place and that we're not causing a bottleneck in there when an emergency vehicle tries to get in there. So of course, the width of the road, sidewalks, lighting, fire hydrants, water line, those things have to all be taken into consideration. But again, I'll take it one step further, and it's not part of the question, but I think anytime a subdivision is built here in the state of West Virginia, and particularly here in Montague County, that developer needs to notify the Board of Education of how many potential students they may have going into that particular school. We've run into a situation with Ridge Dale Elementary where we had the, what is it, about 300 homes built there on the hillside where it just, an explosion of students coming in, and the school couldn't adapt, so we had to obviously add on to the school. But no, we just have to be on top of the water issue from day one and just effectively manage our water access, our quality and dispersment.
All right. Thank you. Last question that I have. Senator Beach, what are your preferred strategies to promote economic growth and prosperity in Montegalia County?
Well, again, continue to play the ambassador. I mean, there's a lot of things, and one of them I haven't mentioned yet, is that I actually was asked to help get an individual who's wanting to come here from London, an investor, and he wants to explore batteries and the development of batteries, different types of batteries, and manufacturing here in West Virginia. But he needed some help getting into the country for his visa, so I actually had to send a letter. Didn't have to, they asked me if I would send a letter so that he could add it to his visa application, saying that we actually, in fact, invited him to West Virginia. So playing the ambassador, playing that person upfront, just being the nice face, promoting Montague County whenever I can, I think that's key. That's what I've done with these two previous companies I've mentioned. Just being there when they invite us to dinner, be there for their presentations, make sure they feel welcome, that's imperative, that they feel welcome, that you're just not listening to their presentation, getting up and walking away. You have to stay there. You have to court these folks. It's like fundraising. You can't get what you need on the first ask. You have to come back to the table multiple times, and that's what I'm attempting to do. And that's key. That's key for Montague County.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Sikora, what are your preferred strategies to promote economic growth and prosperity in Montegalia County?
Again, one of my consistent answers is to continue doing what we've been doing. Over the past five years, I was the lead champion for creating the Morgantown Area Partnership. We saw where we had three or four economic development entities that were all kind of doing the same thing. And so we, when I came into office, before I even, before I was even sworn in, somebody contacted me, Mark Nesselrood Jr., and said, hey, we've been working on this project to consolidate six different entities, and we want to talk to you about it as you come on commission. Now, there wasn't a lot of appetite for that, and I was in the minority as far as the commissioner. The other two commissioners didn't really want to move forward, but I asked them to give me some latitude to see where this can go. And over time, we worked through that. There was a 95-page plan done about how we can do this, similar to what they did in Charleston, and that received a lot of resistance. But I kept plowing forward because being the commission representative to the Montague County Development Authority, I knew that there was a lot of people that were showing up in Mon County but really didn't know who to turn to. And they were turning to different people, and we had a lot of opportunities that were moving, that were going away just because they didn't talk to the right person. So with my persistence, the MAP organization was formed, and today, now we have one-stop-shop in Montegalia County. And the difference is, when I came on commission, the Development Authority had two projects, the airport project that was stalled, and we had a couple units left at Chaplain Hill. Today, we have the industrial park expansion, we have the Harmony Grove interchange, we have the, the airport project is finally installed and moving forward. I could just go on and on, but I see my time's up. But the difference is exponential growth just changed by that one thing of trying to get everybody together and talking on the same page and having one-stop-shop.
All right. Thank you. We have two questions that have come in from the audience, and so this one will go to you first, Mr. Sikora. It's kind of related, I think, to what you were talking about. How would you grow Montegalia County's image and wayfinding?
Okay. Well, that's an interesting subject because we are sitting here talking about, I sit on the Mylan Park Board, and we're always talking about wayfinding coming through this park. People come here and they're not really sure where to go. They don't know where the Aquatic Center is, they don't know where the Ruby Center is. So we could use that for the whole county, the kind of people come to Mon County and they don't know where to go. But I think we also need to, at the same time, improve our image. And we've done a great job with our Convention and Visitors Bureau. Again, I mentioned at the Aquatic Center, we have a bid for the Olympic Trials. When it first was brought to us, the answer was, no, we're not even going to try that. And we made a few phone calls, we got the governor involved, we got President Guy involved, and they said, no, let's move forward on this, and let's do this in a cohesive manner. And so we got everybody working together. And again, if we end up being an Olympic Trials destination, that says a lot about Mon County. So we're growing our image by the opportunities that we have here in Mon County. Same thing with our parks. We had a meeting with our Parks Director last week, and he did a little heat map as far as where people are coming to visit our parks. So when they come to our parks, they're telling us where they're from. And we've got people coming from all over North America to come here and are going to our parks. We've got people coming from Canada, people coming from Mexico, people coming from the West Coast, all over to here. So I think we just need to keep doing some of the good work we're doing is putting the message out about what we have here in Montague County and just that our secret sauce is our, the hot mountain air hospitality that we are able to show anybody that comes here and, like me, falls in love with this place and wants to stay.
All right. Thank you. Senator Beach, the same question. How would you grow Montegalia County's image and wayfinding?
Tourism is the number one economic driver here in the state of West Virginia right now. And we do a pretty good job of taking advantage of it. I think we do a really good job with Cooper's Rocks. At any time, you can go to Cooper's Rocks, and you're going to see cars all the way up and down the East Coast from different states parked in the parking lot, taking advantage of camping and rock climbing, whatever it may be. But then more closer to home right here is the Botanical Garden. And the Botanical Garden is a resource that goes underutilized. And I've been out there many times this year, and it always seems that somebody comes in there asking for directions for something else while they're there, after they've done their little hike around the Botanical Garden. So they ask for assistance there, and sadly, we just don't have the wayfinding we need here in Montague County. I'm actually working on a sign for the Botanical Garden on the interstate, but it goes much further than that. And we have to acknowledge not just our parks, because there's a lot more going on here because we have the Rails to Trail system, we have the river that we should be promoting regularly because of the kayaking and things that can be accomplished there, bicycling that was mentioned. And I passed a piece of legislation several years ago addressing that to establish a commission for biking here in the state of West Virginia. But it took forever for them to appoint a board. But no, we need to continue to, along with the state, promote Montague County as a destination for tourism. Because once we get them in here, I can promise you, we can make them feel welcome because we have a lot going on here. We have some world-class hotels here and just great accommodations for people to stay and visit and things to participate in. But yeah, it's something we need to promote, but we need signage there. We got to get them around the town, around the county.
All right. Thank you. And the final question, we'll start with you, Senator Beach. Who are you formally endorsed by for this upcoming election? And the person who wrote the question said he or she was familiar with past elections but not with this one for the county commission.
Well, it's the United Mind Workers, the Working Families Foundation, Communication Workers, I believe I'm missing one, and Construction Trades.
All right. Thank you. Same question to you, Mr. Sikora. Who are you formally endorsed by for this upcoming election?
Well, I say it all the time, I'm not a career politician, so I don't, I've approached the county commission unlike your normal politician. I don't seek endorsements. I've just, my body of work is my campaign, and I want people to see what I'm doing and what I've done over the past six years and make their own decisions. So I haven't actively sought out endorsements. Though I have, I do have one endorsement that I'm very proud of. I'm endorsed by the Local Lodge, the FOP. And that means a lot to me because my father was a policeman in Weirton, and he was forced to give up his police job, which he loved, after 28 years, to go to work in Weirton still because it had benefits to support his family. And that was a decision he regretted the rest of his life. And we saw that as his kids. We almost felt a little guilty because he gave up something he loved to take care of us. So I never wanted to see another public safety off- So I never wanted to see another public safety officer that has to give up their job, what they love because the money isn't there. So, I've taken a real interest in making sure that we take care of those that protect us and it meant a lot to me when they reached out to me and said, "Well, why don't you come talk to us, we'd like to endorse you?" Because I hadn't even actively sought that out. So, that one means a lot to me, but again, like I said, I haven't really sought out any other endorsements.
All right, thank you. And I think now we were ready for closing statements. And Senator Beach, you will go first.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and NAACP for hosting this event. It's always benefit to the community when we have an opportunity to just come in and chat about each other and the projects we're working on. I just want folks to know that, you know, I've been around this community for 63 years. This is where I was born and this is where I raised and this is where I plan to live my entire life out. And I love this community, I would do anything for it. But again, I believe that what I'm bringing to the table is just the ability to communicate with the general public and share their ideas with their other county commission members. My office has always been open and that's something I will continue to do. I mean, if you have an idea, bring it to me. If you have a phone call, I want to get those listening tours started around the county. I want that strategic plan, we want to implement an audit for the county commission. I want to see it happen every six years, a strategic, excuse me, just an audit, excuse me, for the county commission. But that can result in some wonderful things for us as far as improved services and how we implement those. But yeah, this has been my community, I plan to stay here a long time, you know, bringing a lot to the table, a lot of resources to the table and it's something that no one else can do, no one actually, actually can do. Those resources allowed me to develop the TIF plan with the help of the folks here locally, the research park, the changes to the I-68, I-69, or I-79 interchange and the safety aspects of that. So yeah, I want to continue working here in Montegalia County. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sikora?
Thank you. This is the third time, I believe, that both the senator and I have been together talking to someone. We've been through the, in front of the editorial board, we've been in front of the Morgantown Area Partnership Forum and I keep hearing this issue of communication brought up, but I push back on that. As a project manager, one of the first things you do is develop a communication plan, figure out who your stakeholders are, figure out a stakeholder engagement plan. And I've been, I've communicated, I can't imagine who I haven't communicated with in this county. Now, that complaint was first lodged as far as us not paying attention to the western end of the county. And when the first time it was brought up, I started looking, I said, "I spent an awful lot of time in the western end of the county." And I even looked in the last 40, in the last 45 days, the last month and a half, I've had 44 trips or meetings outside of my normal duties as a work session or a meeting with the commission, no, my duties as Development Authority, meeting with senior senators, those things like that. And 22 of those have been in the western end. So, I push back on the fact that I'm not accessible and am not visiting each end of the county. So, again, I ask for your vote, I ask for you to allow me to continue the good work I've done over the past six years. Usually you vote, when you vote somebody, you want to vote somebody out of office because they're not doing a good job. I haven't heard anybody say I haven't done a good job in the past six years. We've been awarded, we've won an award from the auditor's office as far as our transparency and what we've done here and again, I ask for your vote to continue.
Thank you. I want to thank both of you for participating. Thank you in Facebook land. This will be put up on YouTube for people to watch later. Particularly thank Mr. Sikora and Senator Beach for taking the time tonight to be with us and for providing thoughtful and detailed answers to all the questions, to the League of Women Voters for organizing it and for allowing the Community Coalition for Social Justice and the Morgantown Kingwood branch of the NAACP to also participate. So I think with that, don't forget to vote. Find more information at GoVoteWV or Vote411.org. Early voting starts next Wednesday. Good night.